We will reconvene the board meeting. Next item on the agenda is the Personnel Policy Curriculum Committee Report. Commissioner Hasselbacher.
All right, there you go. We had two discussion items when we met, it seems a long, long time ago, on the 15th. We discussed weighted grades and what I have asked the administration to do is to consider having GPA and, well GPA calculated both ways, have it calculated weighted and unweighted so that seniors who are applying to either colleges or for scholarships, that they can submit whatever transcript is accepted and which one perhaps, you know, puts them in a better light. So this was, I think, the second time, I think, this was discussed in committee. So I'm going to ask Dr. Erhart to again bring it back to committee for further discussion. I'd like to hear, they kind of heard how we thought about weighted grades and what we were looking for, so I'm, I see a head nod.
The high schools spent the whole day looking at the whole grading issue. This was part of that too, so they are continuing to digest that request.
All right, great. Because my hope would be that if we can move forward with this, that the high schools, starting with next year's seniors, say in August, that they can calculate GPA both weighted and unweighted for future students as they apply for scholarships and to universities. And then the other area of discussion was special area teachers scheduling at the elementary schools. These are our music, art, and...
Physical education.
...fired, thank you, teachers. Oh, my goodness. At the elementary schools. And I, we looked at this, was it a year or two ago? We looked at a couple of different scenarios. And primarily, it's a budget issue. I don't think anyone argues that it's easier for teachers to travel or that there aren't benefits to having a full-time music teacher at each elementary school. But what Commissioner Myers and I would like is for us to consider that as we look forward in the budget process, and we all know where we are in the budgeting scenarios that are coming forth for next year, but just to kind of consider the pros and cons of looking at having one, well, I shouldn't put it that way, having six, is it 60 minutes? What would make the change? I can't, I don't have it in my mind.
We were, we had, I demonstrated a 60-minute, or 80-minute, or 90-minute, and then the 60-minute was to increase to have one music teacher at each elementary school. And what we did is we used last year's staffing plan that came for this year, and at that time, it was adding 2.43, I think, at 72,000 for a dollar amount of $174.96. And the example that was provided in that was at Adams. If we were to have 17 sections at 60 minutes, there would be 1,020 minutes for that particular person. That would still allow us to have 420 additional minutes for that music teacher to, for example, work on RTI, Response to Intervention, or something else that the principal would be working with that particular employee with.
Commissioner Myers.
I was just thinking, the impression I got from the meeting is that we seem to be, we seem to like that 60-minute per section plan the best, that we thought that that might be most feasible. So that's the impression that I was left with. That's how I feel about it as well.
Yes, I think that was, that was kind of the consensus of the committee, was that the very fir, the first, the first of the three scenarios would be, you know, the most preferable. And the first, the scenario would mean that each, each building would have a full-time music teacher, and if you're an elementary parent, you know what that might mean in terms of musical performances and things like that being more available at the school, and also for common planning time, and, well, just simply reducing the travel time is also a big plus. And you mentioned the dollar amount that goes with that. So as we think about staffing plan and budget for next year, you know, where does that fit into our priorities?
I do want to add, you know, the dollar amount that I shared, it could be less this time around because we don't know. We're not doing our, the sections as of right now, so we haven't determined the sections. So the number, or the dollar amount that I did share at the PPC meeting and this evening, that's not carved in stone.
Okay. All right. So that will be part of the staffing plan process in the spring, Dr. Sperry? Do you think you could do like, I guess I'm wondering, what would, what would be your preference then to move forward and still be able to look at this as an option?
Well, we're in, we are beginning our meetings with our elementary principals. We are starting to identify the sections that we're anticipating right now. We can do a scenario of 60 minutes with one FTE at each of the, of the elementary schools, and we can also do another scenario where we would pull that. I mean, it would be beneficial within the next board meeting that we would have a direction if that's, if that's what the board would, would be looking at when we do the staffing plan, to say, there will be 12, and then we would look at those sections at that time.
So do we have any, any questions about this? Dr. Schulte?
Well, I think another thing we need to consider is, is this a budget item that's really one of the top items for the board? When I listened to Keith a while ago, as he talked about the 15-16 budget, I thought we were going to need to be pretty budget neutral right away because of some deficits we were looking at. So as we are prioritizing things, we wanted a sense from the board, is the music teacher piece number one or number two on your agenda as we are looking at the whole picture?
And I also remind the board members that there is the five-year forecast of, you know, positions that ideally we'd like to bring back, and, you know, where does this kind of fit into that list as well, so. Correct. All right. It's not really an action item, so I guess, I guess I'm wondering from the other board members, do we want to bring this back as a possible action item or go back to PPC? I don't know, there'd be reason to bring it back to PPC at this time. But we would have to bring it forth as an action item if we're going to give the administration direction.
Commissioner Murray.
I, I'm on that committee, and as much as I would like to have a teacher at every school, I, it's just not, in my opinion, doesn't fit in any of my priorities for this next budget year. I just can't, I just couldn't support that, knowing the difficulties we're going to have just maintaining what we got now. So I, it needs to be put on the shelf for a while. Thanks.
Commissioner Dahmerhausen.
Yeah, I, I heard it was revenue neutral. Oh, no.
No.
Well, I misunderstood. I misunderstood. It was the way you were spreading it, a little different. Okay. Thank you.
Not so much support to bring it back, so.
You know, as I look at, kind of like as we look at a plan, maybe this would be an additional item for whether it's a five-year plan or a future staffing plan or from that standpoint. I think for me, one of the difficulties would be as, as Dr. Schulte asked, would it be one of our top priorities? Well, right now, I'm not sure what I'm choosing between. So, so it would be a little difficult to say that, yes, this would be one of the top priorities, because when we look at additional, you know, where are we having cost, planned cost increases as a whole? And as we look at the staffing plan as a whole, what does that look like? So that's why I said I would suggest, maybe we want to say that, yes, this is something for consideration. We could put it on a, maybe it's the five-year plan. I only say that because this is more so driven by the board, not necessarily from Dr. Schulte or administration recommending it, which the five-year plan was more a recommendation from the superintendent, so, kind of my thoughts on it.
Well, I, I guess I would like to see it added to the five-year plan. You know, where it's added isn't that important to me, whether it's a year out or five years out. I think I just, I just want to make sure it stays on the radar and that we can acknowledge that that's at least the goal, is to get to the point where we don't, you know, where we, where the, there's a full-time music teacher at each building. I, I'm not necessarily looking for it for this year, but if we could add it to the five-year forecast, that would be sufficient for me.
Commissioner Myers.
I agree with this, Commissioner Hasselbacher. I almost called you Dr. Hasselbacher.
Oh, thanks.
You're welcome.
I'll be the first.
But, you know, I guess, I guess, you know, as a, as a musician myself, and as an educated person, I cannot, I cannot stress more to you how important this is. I know it sounds like it's just, you know, recorders in third grade, but this teaches performance, teaches responsibility, and there are so many things that, so I want it stay, I want it, to keep it on the radar, and if we can, if we can fit it in next year, I want to do it. But I, but I don't want to let this die. I think it's really important. I know it sounds like it's not much, but, but as an educator and as someone that's been a part of this kind of stuff in my life, I can tell you that it's incredibly important. Thank you.
Commissioner Shelley.
I agree that this is something that we need to prioritize. I think that there is a number of students that we are not championing if we're providing them with this, because if we have students that their, their gift or their passion is music, and we don't provide them this avenue, at the same level, we provide some other avenues, we may be losing them and they may not be able to succeed to their greatest potential. The other thing is, we've all seen the studies, music helps, and if we want to see this district go forward, we need to start pushing some of the arts, and we need to be really proactive on it.
Steam away. Dr. Schulte.
What did she say?
Steam away.
Well, thank you for that information. I think both Commissioner Murray and myself would agree that music is very important, and I'm happy to keep this somewhere so we don't lose it. I'm a musician as well. As we move forward, then let's look for ways, let's find ways to bring money in so we can do these things, these wonderful things for our kids. Thank you.
All right. So is there consensus to have it put on the five-year forecast? Wherever, and I would leave it up to administration to figure out where that might be on the forecast.
If I could just add this, though, come February 10th, we're geared up, and so, for staffing at the elementary and the scheduling piece. So the five-year forecast is going to come later. So there's a timing issue with this.
Yeah, well, and I, I'm not under, you know, you know what the priorities are in terms of staffing, so if you feel this is priority one for next year and you put it on the, you know, the five-year forecast for, that's, that's fine, but if it's two, three years out, that's...
Well, I would just ask for direction, because come, come February, I'm going to need to know, we're going 60 minutes, 12 teachers for music, or, or we're not going to. Because to go back and add those positions, those hours back in, is going to be a scheduling nightmare, and I'm, if the, if our elementary principals are watching right now, they're, they're listening very attentively.
I was going to say, so, just to be clear, I believe what I heard was status quo, and this will be on the plan five, over the next five years, not including this upcoming year.
There's consensus. Commissioner Sotomayor.
The plan to study this. Not talking about, not at this point anyway, saying this is going to be our goal to have this, yet this is, we're going to look at this as a possible avenue, to be studied as part of a five-year plan. We're not making a decision at this point to go forward, I'm assuming.
We don't want to lose sight of it.
Right.
So we're putting it on my plan, my forecast, so we see it there.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would be important to hear from our principals. Our elementary principals have an opinion too, but that can come later.
All right. You have enough direction?
Thank you.
Okay. And that concludes my report from the PPC.
Just had one question regarding weighted grades. As far as calculating, and that is, and I guess the question becomes, how easy is it to go back for the seniors and say, over their high school career, these classes would have been those at a higher level, and I'm assuming that we, that would be relatively easy to do.
My understanding from Dr. Erhart and others is that probably the difficult part is determining what's weighted and how it's weighted. There are different, many different ways to calculate weighted grades.
Sure.
So, yeah, I think one, once that would be nailed down, doing it retroactively wouldn't, infinite campus can do it both ways, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is item 14, a report from the Legislative Committee Report. Commissioner Murray.
Thank you. We met, majority of the time, we spent reviewing all the resolutions that'll before, that will be before Greg Argy at the convention, and that's, he'll talk about that, that next, our next agenda item. Just a couple items of interest. We requested from administration to draft two proposals that should be ready for possible action next board meeting. One will be a position statement on Common Core, and another will be on the position of voucher schools for our consideration. Also, there's a possibility, I don't know for sure, that part of the administration and/or a school board member may be traveling with Forward Janesville to do a Forward Janesville Day in Washington DC, do some lobbying, but I don't know if that's, that's true or not, if that's a possibility. Tomorrow morning, I'll be in Madison. I'm going to attend a public hearing on Assembly Bill Number One. It's 10 o'clock in the morning. It's about the new proposal for accountability, about testing what happens if you don't cut the grade, you gets, you know, you could have seven years to cut the mustard. If not, you could be turned into a charter school. There's just so many different variables, but that's the first public hearing tomorrow at, at 10:00. So I'll just, just more informational, to take a listen on how that might unfold. However, it's, the best guess, it could be up for action before the end of the month. It could leave committee very quickly and get to the floor, Assembly floor, before the end of the month. So these kinds of things could happen real, real quickly. And then my last task I was given was to contact our legislators for another forum. As soon as I can validate all those individuals to be here at one time, we'll, we'll reschedule our next board meeting. That's it. Committee meeting.
Next is item 15, discussion and review. 2015 Wisconsin Association of School Board Delegate Assembly Propose Resolutions. So I'm the delegate for the assembly next week, and during the Legislative Committee meeting, we went through each resolution, and the commissioners that were there provided some direction. For most of the resolutions, there were several that we thought would be best to discuss as a complete board. I don't know if anyone wants a recap of which ones, from a direction, either to vote yes or leave it up to me, or however we would want to do that, or just cover the ones that there was questions about.
Cover the ones that are questioned.
Okay. Commissioner Myers, you had a question?
Well, if, first, if I could just take a minute.
Sure.
Resolution 1517, teacher shortages and alternative licensure pathways? I, I guess I need clarif, I don't know if you can provide me with clarification about that, because it sounds like that they're looking for, or willing to accept candidates with bachelor's degrees, but then if you look at the rest of it, it sounds like they should have gone through a teacher training program. I'm not, it doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't know if you can clarify it for me or not, but I'm a little apprehensive about it, just because it seems contradictory.
Commissioner Hasselbacher.
I took notes during our, when we met to discuss these, and that was one that we were going to leave up to Greg, because we had the same questions. We weren't sure what that meant, so hopefully he would get clarification during the delegate process and figure that part out.
Okay.
So procedurally, what will take place is next Tuesday night, the, there is a pre-assembly convention of the delegates, and it is for the delegates to come and ask questions just like about this resolution, and so we make sure that we understand what we're voting on at that time. So this is one, I've seen who proposed it, so I, I have some insight of maybe, but it's just a maybe where they're coming from, but yeah, definitely to get clarification that takes place next Tuesday night.
I, I would, I would caution you about proposals that, that really lighten the expectations of people that enter the classroom. They've done this in Florida. My own cousin went and did it, because he thought he could just be a PE teacher and throw the ball around, and that was it, and he got his, himself fired in four months because he, you know, he wasn't, he was a bad hire. I love him to death, but he was a terrible hire. He should never have been there. And, and so, I would just, you know, ask you to, to really think about anything that lightens the expectations, the qualifications of anybody that's supposed to be in the classroom. No matter, I mean, teacher shortage is a stink, but I don't think it's worth it, so.
Definitely noted. Okay. So we can start back at the beginning of which ones we had questions for.
I thought we were going to leave the first one up to you.
Yes.
So we had some questions about that, so that was similar to the one that we just discussed, to get some more information. Resolution 1505, I think we maybe, I think we asked for perhaps some clarification from Colleen Onzruud about what, what exactly that, the implications were for this course options one, and the same for 1506. I think we just, we thought maybe Colleen could help, help Greg figure out what that meant, so. 1507, we're going to leave up to Greg. 1508, ask for more information. 1510, ask for more information. 1511, we're going to leave that one up to Greg. 1514 and 1515, I think Greg was going to get some more information, and then the teacher shortage just one. So, yeah, you should have a lot of questions on Tuesday night.
Wasn't the 1511, rehiring Wisconsin retirement system retirees, wasn't that one we were to discuss here?
Oh, yes, because that was the one about paying inter, or about collecting retirement while you were working for a district, right? Is that what that one was about? They were changing the break from, the break in service from third, no, from, the resolution is to change the break in service from 75 days to 60 days, and also to restore to any rehired employees the option to continue to receive their WRS annuity.
So there's any direction that...
It was one that we thought at least we should, at least open up to if there's any particular viewpoint here. Okay, no one to jump in on that one? Commissioner Murray.
The reason I hesitated about this one, or didn't want to support it, was it gives the option of the rehiree to draw on their, draw on their WRS retirement while working. So my concern was, those, the WRS participants rely on contributions from current employees to continue the fund. So if you have a hire in the school district that doesn't contribute in some fashion to the fund, to me, that's not good, because it's under, it's not funding the WRS. That's why I didn't think we should support it. And, and keep in mind, these, these are, it's serious business, but these are resolutions that the WASBA picks up, and there's, there's no bills attached, you know, there's no assembly or senator that has picked up these, this information and said, I'm going to champion this and circulation, circulate it for support. That's when the Legislative Committee, our responsibility, say, hey, there's a bill on the floor, Senate or House, addressing these issues. I'm not trying to minimize this, but it's not a... Thanks.
Yeah, I guess to expand on that, it's, it gives our Wisconsin Association of School Board, I'll say lobbyists, particular resolutions to present, and in an attempt to try to get legislators to pick them up. And that's what the whole purp, one, maybe not the whole purpose, but that's one of the main purposes of these resolutions.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Greg, can you find out if, under 1516, if I should be thrown in jail or not?
You're kidding. All right.
Related to the resolution?
Yes. Last year, I served as a, I'm not sure what to call it, but I helped out in practices. I couldn't be at a meet as far as be a coach at a meet, but I was drilling kids in tennis practices. I did go through a background check, but I'm not sure that that was a volunteer coach, just a parent helping out, or what you call that, but I knew I couldn't be paid for it ever. That happened a long time ago, we discussed that, which was fine, but I've, I'm not sure what a coach is versus a parent helper is. So if I was technically was a coach, even though I was never coaching at meets, I certainly was doing some type of coaching during the practices as a help to the, quote, other coaches. And so if I've been violating the law and need to be thrown behind bars, please let me know, and I'll be the first to, to walk in.
Specifically asked.
Thank you.
So should I support this or not?
Motion on all items to give Commissioner Argy freedom to be unencumbered in his presentations at their voting at the convention.
Second.
Here's a motion by Commissioner Sotomayor, second by Commissioner Hasselbacher, to, an asset to allow me to vote in accordance with how best I see fit. Now, from a discussion standpoint, during the Legislative Committee meeting, there was some direction given to some of those, so I will honor those, but there's quite a few. It's, it'll be more dialogue, gated information to go, does this make sense, and does it represent what we as the school board of the school district of Janesville would like to see, based on the conversations that I've heard? So, if there's no further discussion on that item, the board should vote. That passes unanimously.
Next item, announcements. Commissioner Hasselbacher.
I have two. First, the Washington Seminar is having an Applebee's breakfast fundraiser on Saturday, February 7th, from 8:00 to 10:00. Tickets are $5, and I just happen to have some, so if anyone wants some Applebee's breakfast fundraiser tickets, let me know. They're $5 apiece, and we keep $4 of every ticket, so it's, it's really one of, it's the best fundraiser around, as far as I've found, so. And secondly, Dave Mumma is the retiring transit director from the city of Janesville, and he helped our Transportation Committee really get the youth fair bus token passed a couple of years ago, and he sent an email, and this was back in November, I meant to share, but I forgot, regarding the youth fair bus tokens. The bus tokens started in September 2013, and middle and high school students can only buy them at the schools, and the transit system set a single-day usage record in October for using these tokens, and the sales during October of this year had a 50% increase over the sales of youth fair tokens the previous year. So the youth fair tokens, they're a hit. The city was concerned because they, they thought there might be a drop in their revenue with this, but it's really, they've done very well. So I want to commend all the middle and high schools for their sales of these youth fair tokens, and thank everyone who's used them. I'm glad that it's, it's working out very well.
Other announcements. Dr. Schulte.
I too have tickets. I have tickets for the Martin Luther King Luncheon this year. Typically, there's a breakfast held in Beloit every year that we all attend, and this year it will be a luncheon instead on January 19th at Delminico's in Beloit, so if anyone's interested, let me know on that. And also, we have the Forward Janesville Luncheon coming up on January 29th, and our very own John Zimmerman is being recognized as Educator of the Year, so I hope you can attend that as well. My final announcement is, I have some good news. Our staff satisfaction... Our staff satisfaction survey results are in from the survey they took in December. And our results do continue to go upward. We were at a 4.0 last year and we're at a 4.09.
Other announcements?
Well, I have a couple. The Janesville Education Foundation is also having an Applebee's pancake breakfast February 21st. So you will hear more about that. And also, the Craig Spotlighters. And I will, number one, say my son is on, is a spotlighter. So it's going to come to mind a lot more. But this past Saturday, there was a competition in lacrosse. 10 different show choirs from, stretching from South Dakota, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Omaha, Nebraska. And then the rest, I think, were pretty much around the state of Wisconsin. But the Craig, this the first concert, they finished fourth, did an outstanding job. You can see the Craig Spotlighters Thursday night at Craig Preview Night that had to be moved a week because of the canceling of school last Thursday. And then also at the Janesville Performing Arts Center. Craig High School is sponsoring a, I'll say, a choir exhibit, exhibition, variety show. And the show choir will also be performing with that. So you have a couple times to catch an outstanding 20 to 25 minute show. And if you need tickets, just let me know. Other announcements.
Okay, so no further announcements. Future board agenda items. Commissioner Myers.
I have two. Do you want them one at a time or you want me to shoot?
The same time. Let's make this interesting.
At the same time?
One at a time would be good.
Okay. Well, I'd like on the agenda, a review of the rules and responsibilities and oversight of employees and staff and board members on the election process and on nomination forms. Who is to do what and who is not to do anything at all? And the second thing, I would like a review of legal representation. I'd like to know who represents whom. I'd like to know what the statutes are. And I would like to know and have a discussion of that in comparison with other school districts and how they are represented.
So the first one would be a review, now just of the election process handling with respect to, and I'm assuming you meant school board members?
Yes.
And the second one, is there any more?
Well, school board members, staff, employees.
Yeah, that's why I said the whole process.
Oh, I see.
Procedurally, I'm being more inclusive.
Gotcha.
Here from the beginning to the end point.
Yes.
Just what is the process we've used and then a review of that.
Yes.
And the second one is a review of the legal representation for the board itself as well as the various, because I know we have several for the district in several different capacities, just what do we have for that? Okay, is that? And as a board, are we good with the first one reviewing the election process? And the second one, legal review of, well, this is more just this is what the legal representation is, but, okay. Okay. Other future board agenda items.
Commissioner Murray.
I have two. Let me set it up this way. I went and visited the Rock University High School yesterday, just curious. And I met some wonderful students out there. And they were kind of, they were busy, you know, on their computers here and there around the area. And, but I noticed there wasn't 47 there. Because that's what our enrollment was. So I was curious. And one of the substitute teachers was there and was real nice, explained to me the reason, potential reasons why. And one struck me very curious was, and she says, well, some of the students are back at their home school, Craig Endor Parker, attending the Academy for International Studies. I go, that's, so now I'm really interested is like, well, jeez, maybe I've got the wrong information. But I'm like, this is interesting because I think part of the agreement was, once RUSE was established, the other one would not exist. So I guess I need clarification on what's really going on, you know, with that. If that's not the case or not, or what's really going on. And I suppose, I guess generally speaking, a good update on RUSE. Which include clarification on that particular issue.
So I think enough had nighed.
Thank you. And then, I, if any of the other ones read the SAC proposal, that was in our packet, was emailed to us, was it today or yesterday? You know, I thought it was really interesting on a number of levels that the proposal was, and was approved to send a team to Helsinki, Finland to attend some educational opportunities. And as I read through this, you know, explains the cost, but some of the things were a little confusing to me was when it was answered, is there an impact on the schools? And it was checked as no. When reality, there is, to me, there is an impact because part of this is we have to hire some subs to fill in. To me, that's a significant impact. And time lost, that whether or not here, they're in Finland is a significant impact. And other questions about what does the board have any authority over this kind of proposal? When we're sending five of our employees to Helsinki, Finland at a significant cost? So my question is, and not only that, but the way it's being funded through, evidently we have residual income in the Jeep budget that will be used, that was stated. And then part of the revenue from this event is going to be used. And grant money will be used as well. So it's very confusing to me. There's so many issues involved with that. So what authority do we have to use money from this event to send staff to Helsinki, Finland? That doesn't add up to me. So I'm just explaining how I view this. So how do I, as a board member, ask you to, you know, what sort of an agenda item can I ask for that addresses this kind of action? So... So I guess, without creating giant agendas, what if, who has the authority over the funds received from Rock, this, whatever this one event was called, Rock the Schoolhouse? Or any other fundraising events? Who has the authority to use that money for expenditures? Or does that money, where does that money go?
It's typically by the company. That puts the fundraising together.
And what authority does the school board, the nine of us have to say to this SAC proposal, even though the administration or superintendent's approved that, do we have the authority to say, no, I'm sorry, that's not happening? Do we have that authority?
So as I interpret that, it would be a review of the SAC proposals, I guess approval and authority and maybe it's a review of SAC proposals, procedural review of SAC proposals.
Thank you.
Is it SAC proposals? Is it professional development? We have all kinds of professional development and things all over the place.
Maybe the best way of saying this at this point is, I think we have an idea of kind of where Kevin was coming from with this. It's related, in this particular case, to the SAC proposal, maybe more inclusive would be overall, what all falls into this type of proposal and how that's managed. So it's probably some better wording, but is that something that we all would want to review?
Maybe not.
Is it another agenda item?
No. I just wanted to.
Can help for wording?
I interpret that Kevin would like a report on it. Isn't that correct on this item and that? And then from there, could develop further. But that's, all he wants is a report, is I'm understanding it and what leads into this. Does that sound about right, Kevin? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what I was reading from it.
I'm thinking.
We can come back as Commissioner Murray thinks about that. Other future board agenda items. Commissioner Sotomayor.
To dovetail what Commissioner Myers asked about, I think all of us were unaware of who decides issues that came up today. And, but I thought one thing and turned out it was, you know, our board clerk. And how to determine when someone should recuse themselves. I saw this thing, board clerk, I believe, for at least one of my 10 years here. And obviously, had I been in that position, I would have said I shouldn't be in the position to decide this because I have some biasness in this, in the cases. And I think we could all probably have some bias at some level because this is a political issue. And I think we should review that whole process, when recusal should be done, when we, you know, when the board decides this, obviously, because what if, you know, the person was actually on the ballot who was being the judge and jury on this? Or in my case, supporting a candidate? Or we can also, we have influence by certain political factions that people could claim there's debt owed to or encumbrances made in the past. So it's a very slippery slope, I would have drawn those lines. But I for sure, I would have myself would have said, I can't do this because I have the vested interests, even though I think people would hopefully think I'm normally fair minded. Real issues about that. So how we, in the future, and this was a, obviously, a precedent setting thing that never happened before as far as we know, but therefore, it's not going to happen again. Let's make sure we know how we handle in the future.
So just so I understand, it's really the process and the procedures and the rationale of when we recuse ourselves as board commissioners, under what circumstances? I'm thinking a review from our attorney Moore as he would go through, here are the reasons why we should, and go through that process.
I would like to know is, how this came about? Is that a state statute regarding board clerk's functionality? Is that our own policies that we're following? Just to review how it all came about at some point, somebody, we know, so.
So I interpret that part as part of what Commissioner Myers was asking.
Probably part of that faction.
The whole electoral process. Because as if, well, yes. Okay. Any other future?
Let me just, my intent of this is, I see there's, to me, there's errors on this proposal. So therefore, what authority do I have, or all of us inclusive have, over this procedure to say, no? That's what I need to know. Otherwise, I can talk about it till I'm blue in my face and it doesn't mean anything unless I have authority to affect change. For example, number nine, what stakeholders have been made aware of this proposal and now have you sought their support? And the answer is, the Board of Education at the October 28th, 2014 Open Board Meeting, a memo was also distributed, selected principals and teachers from Harrison Roosevelt Schools. The superintendent is on the Global Education Council Board and has been invited to attend this training for further promote the cause of global education and international study. She will attend this conference with her team. Now, I don't know what that means. Did, were we, were we informed that stakeholders at this meeting, that this proposal was before us? I don't think it was. I got the minutes. There was nothing in there that said there was a proposal for a team to go to Helsinki, Finland. You know, I'm, so, that's a... You know.
Well, the particulars are not, I mean, it's more of making sure that we understand what the agenda item is that we would have before us.
So again, for second and third time, I just, I want to know, do we as a board have the authority to say, no, to a SAC proposal that was approved by administration?
So in working with the superintendent, I guess I'll say, I mean, if everybody's in agreement of doing that, the result of what the agenda item might not be exactly that it may have, be more latitude to be more inclusive, but it would also include what you've said.
Thank you.
If that's acceptable. Okay. Other future board agenda items. Okay. That's what I was getting ready to go back and go. So for review of the election process, I'm going to say we have some time for that one at this point before the next, well, there's no real rush for that at this point. Is that acceptable?
I think we should talk about it sooner than later.
Sooner than later. Okay. Sooner as than next month?
Next month would be all right.
March?
Next month is February.
I know. I'm just, I'm going, I threw that out, so.
You're going to see if I'm paying attention?
See how far out we want to go with this?
So I'll see if this hearing is available to do a presentation in February.
And so with that, would the recusal be a part of that or the second part of?
I'm fine with that. Whatever.
The legal representation, could probably do that. I'm going to assume in next board meeting, that's more.
I think that's a pretty quick and easy answer.
Yeah, that's why I was assuming next board meeting for that one. The Rock University High School update clarification.
Well, a couple of months, you know, I don't, that's not a priority, but that information will be...
A couple of months, you know, I don't, that's not a priority, but that, that information will be a foundation for some budget discussion.
Okay. I will slot it in where there is a good spot, February, March. And then the authority for the fundraising, usage of funds from fundraisers.
There's no urgency in that either.
And then lastly, the SAC proposal handling authority, professional development, all of what that is, recognizing.
Well, I, I keep looking at this, I don't see a date when this is happening, so. If there's enough support by the board to say no, we need to know. I mean, if it's already in play, tickets are bought.
Well, that would be that particular situation, but then as, as a bigger picture.
I think as far as the authority question, that's probably a pretty quick and simple answer as well.
Okay, okay. Would that be next meeting? We.
Sure.
Bring your pillows next time.
And this is already paid for and done, so. If the board has the authority to say no and chooses to exercise that, then it would just be a loss of those.
Okay. Think we're out, we, we're. There's a lot of latitude in, in future board agenda items there, so. Okay, any other items that come to mind for anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we have finally reached the end of our agenda, we are adjourned.